Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you have a moment of silence. Thank you. Roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yep.
Vines.
Here.
Kowinski. Salinas. Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Warpo.
Here.
Racles.
Here. We also have Kowinski here and Salinas is here. Everybody else we have. Eight present. One absent at this point. Okay, next up mayor's address.
Hi, good afternoon or good evening, everybody. Thank you. This is my address from January 22nd, 2024. I wanted to start off by welcoming back Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Warpo. Condolences again to both of you. We missed you guys and welcome back to the council. It's good to see you again. I wanted to go through my activity log for the last two weeks. This is a summary, obviously. I went with, obviously, there's been a lot going on with the Hammond Sanitary District as of late. I recently met with all five of the board members, including the member from Munster, as well as almost everybody that works in the Hammond Sanitary District. And attended a executive session with the Hammond Sanitary District's Board of Directors, so that we're getting on the same page. Everybody's on the same page with the new CEO, Mylan Krasinski. So a lot of organization meetings going on recently with that. We also lobbied for two days straight in Indianapolis. While we were there, we met with Representative Porter, Representative Cherry, Representative Snow, Representative Judy in Indianapolis, speaking with all of them in regards to Hammond's potential food and beverage tax proposal. It seems as though, at this point, it's going very well in the House. Obviously, you got to get through the House and the Senate. You know, it seems like everything's thumbs up so far. Keep in mind, even if Hammond has given the ability in Indianapolis to enact a food and beverage tax, we still have to come back to the Hammond Council before anything can be done, okay? While in India, I also attended the Northwest Indiana Legislative Event for the Northwest Indiana Forum with the Economic Development Team, held a community meeting at the Philly Steen Center with the host, Councilman Barry Tyler, in regards to Memorial Park development. It was attended by about thirty or forty residents. I thought the meeting was really good meeting. It seems like we have good marching orders on that and we're moving forward. Tended the inaugural ball for the new Mayor Gary, Indiana, on behalf of our city. I know he was happy to see me there, and I wanted to say congratulations to the new Mayor Gary, Eddie Melton. I know our third district councilman, Barry Tyler, was also at the inaugural ball, although we didn't run into each other. But attended the annual MLK March and attended the event afterward at the Hammond Civic Center. I believe we set a new record on the coldest beginning of the March ever. That's always a very cold day. It was minus ten when I got out of my car that morning. So I know there's some action items before the council tonight. I've heard that the event space ordinance is going back in the committee for some reworking. That's fine. I appreciate you all working on that. The pop-up event spaces has become an issue across the city in all of your districts. This is where an open space, it may be a nail salon, it may be, you know, a barber, barber shop, and then at nighttime it turns into a club, and they're serving alcohol, sometimes worse. We want to, you know, work with the council and come up with better defined events, pop-up event spaces, so that we could deal with this better in the future. So thank you for working with us on that. I know the ratification of public, Board of Public Works matters. I know this, this is an issue you all watch closely. I want to point out that the Board of Public Works in the year 2023 approved six stop sign actions and three resident-only parking matters, and they're being ratified by you all tonight. But it's nine different actions that occurred. I wanted to point out that it's not being misused, I hope. So I hope, in your opinion, it's not being misused. You have a bond ordinance for Station Number Two. I imagine this has been explained to you. I just wanted to explain it on the record for the audience that's watching. This gives us options to get Station Two built cheaper. You're giving us more options for financing. We had ARP money to help get this station done, and at the time, we were talking to you about a build-operate-transfer scenario for financing. We're still committed to that. However, because the Indiana Bond Bank is getting so aggressive with interest rates, we thought we'd take a look at interest rates and compare them. If it's cheaper to go with traditional financing, we'll go that route. So you're giving us another option. In the toolbox, we still may go with BOT, or we may go with financing traditionally, but you're just giving us one more option, and we're going to take the cheapest option to build Station Number Two, obviously. And last but not least, I know that there's a resolution we submitted. When I say "we," the administration submitted the resolution to you all. It's not legally required. I wanted to make that clear, all right? This is in regards to the haunted house slash fireworks stand on 177th Street and the proposed eminent domain action the city wants to take, or the city has started, actually. I wanted to see where you all were on this issue, not for legal reasons. This isn't, if you vote against the resolution, it's not like this stops it automatically. However, it matters to me how you feel a lot, and I'm going to need your support through this process. So if this resolution went through and it did not fare well tonight, it would probably be a signal to me that this may not be an easy journey for me. So I thought that it would be prudent if we submitted a resolution to you all, talking about the process that we intend to undergo in regards to the property on 177th. I call it the haunted house for purposes of this, what we call it when we talk about the project. As you all know, we, the city developed a property similar, developed a property, property very similar to this at the old River Park Apartment Complex. We took an apartment complex that we bought for fourteen million, and it's worth around seventy million right now. The assessed value of the haunted house is around six hundred thousand, so let's call it a million. At the end of this day, I will not accept for anything less than two sit-down restaurants at this location and either a large hotel or an office building, like we have at Oxbow right now. We could turn this piece of property into something that's valued at thirty million dollars. Generates jobs, generates tax revenue. All due respect to the Huluska family. I care greatly for them. They're a great family. I would never, in a million years, come up here and talk bad about that family. They're a great family. They've done a great job for twenty years. I think that if I was, I think because I'm a good mayor, I like to consider myself a good mayor, this is why I'm doing this project. Because I look at a piece of property completely underutilized, seeing its better day, and a good mayor is going to take that property and run forward, even though he may know the family, even though it's not the easy thing to do. This is the hard thing to do, definitely, but it's going to make our city stronger. It's going to make the fourth district stronger. You know, Councilman Emerson's district does not have a sit-down restaurant in the fourth district, and that's a shame. I'm not going to settle for anything less than two at this location. We could probably do more. It's fifteen acres of highly developable property. Five hundred thousand cars a day drive by it and see this property. It's going to be the easiest piece of property we've ever developed. All due respect, the highest and best use of this land is not a fireworks stand and is not a haunted house. That is not the highest and best use. This is one of our most marketable pieces of property. That's why I'm being a good mayor and doing the hard thing and, and having to look a family in the face that I've known for a long time and say, "I'm sorry, but this is the, this is what a mayor has to do. This is the best thing we could do with this property," and Hammond needs this, by the way. We don't have the luxury to sit around on marketable properties and wait another three or four years. We don't have that luxury. We need people to live here now. If we keep waiting three or four more years, it'll never get done. That's why I'm going forward on this. I'm asking you to approve this resolution as a signal that I'm not going off solo. So I'm open for your questions. I appreciate. Everybody, I appreciate the Huluska family. I know they're very concerned. I wish I was dealing with them directly. I wish we were dealing with them directly, that they were the landowners and they would be getting the money that we're going to have to pay for this, because we're not stealing this. It's not like we're going to get it for free. We're going to pay. This is going to cost money, but we're going to spend money and we're going to make a lot more for the city Hammond, and that's what our job is. That's why I'm doing it. So thank you for listening to me. I'm available for any questions you have on any topic I'm talking about.
Okay, so may I have any questions for the mayor?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Emerson.
I agree with you, mayor.
Thank you, councilman.
I, I want what's best for the fourth district. On, on the other hand, I, I appreciate the Huluska's family. And, but when, when, when you said, "How many people drive by?" Eighty, ninety-four every day, that's, that's in my consideration, too. So, but I, I don't mean any harm to anybody, but I really think that I agree with you, that, that is really what we should be doing, but it's going to take time, you know. So, anyway, that's all.
Thank you, councilman. Any other questions?
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Tyler.
Mayor, thanks for the update.
Thanks, councilman.
You mentioned that, well, sorry, I saw that the basement backup protection program was approved, was funded.
Yes, sir. Through the council. I, I should have put that in. It was approved through the sanitary district. Thank you for bringing that up.
Can you tell me, do you have an update? Because I know we have a special.
I do not. I wish I did. I read it in the minutes, and I should have got more details, so I'd be going off the top of my head. I don't, Councilman Kowinski, do you?
What are we speaking about?
The basement, the backflow preventer program was approved by the Hammond Sanitary District.
Up to two thousand?
That's what we're struggling with. I can't off the top of my head. I don't remember.
It was going to be up to two thousand.
I'm sure it's.
It went from one thousand, it was going to be two thousand.
Nothing's changed on that, so I'm sure that's the number. But I, let me update you guys at the next meeting on that exact, it was passed by the sanitary district board. I read that in the minutes.
So I know, also know that there was a conversation around if families qualified, then maybe paying the full amount for them to through other funding from community development, maybe HUD dollars or something like that. Maybe not HUD, but some other.
I think HUD is behind, if the funding, listen, councilman, honestly, it's all speculative. I'm not sure what's in there. Could, could I get that, bring it back for the next meeting? I apologize.
No, thank you.
That should have been in my report. I read it yesterday, and I forgot to include it.
I don't know if this helps.
Spring will be here before we know it, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, especially with the world.
In the past, the homeowner paid the full amount.
Right.
Showed receipt, submitted it to sanitary board, I think approved it, and then the check was cut. That's the past.
Yeah, we, we spoke about in this new iteration of the program that we would pay for it. In some instances, we might pay for it a hundred percent without the family having to come out of pocket for anything. So there wouldn't be no reimbursement process. It would just be us taking care of the costs with.
I'm not sure about that.
With the plumbing company.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We'll have to find out, but that makes me nervous, because city doesn't work, including the sanitary district, doesn't work on private property. So we can't pay.
It wouldn't be, of course, it wouldn't be us. It would be us paying the plumbing company instead of.
I don't know. I'm not sure what was the final. I had, something, something was passed. I didn't follow it up, and I should have.
Passed where?
Sanitary District Board, last meeting. I caught it in the minutes, and I should have explored deeper. It was just, I just read it, so I apologize.
No problem. Thanks, mayor.
Anyone else?
One more thing. On the resolution, sometimes I think resolutions are the best way to do business, and in a case like this, where obviously a family's being affected, I think it's a good thing, because sometimes I get locked in too much. So it's like a temperature gauge with me, with you all in the resolution. So I appreciate you all thinking about it deeply and voting in your conscience. So appreciate it. Nice talk to you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, approval of minutes.
President?
Councilman Spitali.
Motion to second, January 8th, 2024, be placed on file.
Second.
And a motion of second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, register approval of claims.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated January 8th, 2024, and ending with claims dated January 17th, 2024, claim number 192 through claim number 745, inclusive in the amount of eleven million, eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred seventy-three dollars and sixty-six cents. I so move.
Second.
And a motion of second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Approval claims passes nine zero. Next up, communicate, public hearings. We have none. Communications.
Mr. President?
Councilman Salinas.
I'd like to just inform back and report here to the council that I attended a training last week in Indianapolis, January 16th through the 18th. It was the Neo Boot Camp, the newly elected officials boot camp sponsored by AIM. AIM stands for Accelerate Indiana Municipalities, and there were several workshops that I found very beneficial, the TIF, Special Taxing District, the budgets, as well as the enforcing municipal code workshops. We had a special guest speaker, Lieutenant Governor Suzanne Crouch. She offered lots of insight to the group, and I found most beneficial the council member peer roundtable meetings where the council members from across the state spoke and gave some advice to all of us newly elected officials. Overall, it was a great networking opportunity. I got to sit and talk with some established members from smaller communities, as well as newly appointed officials that have been a part of just the public and have done great things. So I'm excited moving forward and motivated after attending this conference. Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Any other communications?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
We received a letter from George Stoya that I would like placed on file.
Thank you. You don't need a motion. We just place it on file. George Stoya, thank you. Any other communications? Any other communications? Communications is closed. Committee reports.
Mr. President?
Councilman, Councilman Emerson.
I attended the Capitol Improvement Board and was welcomed by Dean Button, as well as the other new members. It was on one seventeen twenty-four. We had under new business funding allocations for streets and roads and agreement, and this, this was no additional cost to the city. We also had a summer street reconstruction drive engineering from American's structure point. Part of that is reimbursed, two-year construction. And then we also had funding allocation for the city hall siren relocation. It's, it's already, I've already seen it in the east parking lot, but it's going to be moved from the building that was raised. And also, we had a funding allocation for NICD, for the downtown station. And part of that involved a one million dollar grade change, and also a funding allocation for the Wabash widening. And that was it. There was no one at public expression.
Mr. President?
Thank you, councilman.
Just a quick question. Was that million-dollar expense for the grade change, was that a change order? Or is that just there and you approved it? I'm curious.
No, we, we approved the amount of two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. There's two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, forty thousand left for the Russell Street station.
Okay, any other?
President?
Yes.
Bring out ordinance twenty-four dash zero one.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I'd like to announce the upcoming Community and Crime Watch Groups meetings. Community Watch at Mount Zion will meet on February 14th at 1:00 p.m. Edison Community Watch will meet February 7th, 6:30 p.m. at Edison School. Harrison Park Crime Watch will meet on February 6th. That's at 6:00 p.m. at the VFW on Holman Avenue. Hessville Crime Watch will meet February 15th, 6:00 p.m. at the Gene Shepherd Center. Irving Community Watch will meet February 2nd, 9:15 a.m., I'm sorry, 9:30 a.m. at Irving School in the Art Room. And Whiting Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet February 8th, 6:30 p.m. at Calumet College. As usual, I urge everyone to come out to a community or crime watch meeting to find out what's going on, not only in your neighborhood, but also in your city, and you'll get to meet some of your neighbors as well, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councilman. Any other committee reports?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I will be bringing out twenty, ordinance twenty-four dash oh-two.
No, we're just introducing that one today, right?
Right. Okay.
Any, any other committee reports? Committee reports closed. Ordinance, third and final reading. Councilman Spitali.
President?
Yes.
Make a motion to issue a notice with intent to consider on February 12th, 2024, in a meeting at 5:15.
And that's for twenty-four dash one?
That is correct.
So we have a intent to consider for twenty-four oh-one to be considered on next meeting, February 12th?
That's correct.
Twenty-four. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a motion of second by Councilman Salinas. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Passes nine zero. Intent to consider and be brought up at the next council meeting. Next up, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance twenty-four dash zero-two, sponsored by Councilman Emerson, and ordinance respecting and ratifying the actions of the City of Hammond Board of Public Works and Safety related to traffic regulation for 2023.
Mr. President? Yes, Councilman Emerson.
This involves six stop signs.
Do you like to bring out the, bring it out in first?
Yes, first, first.
First and second reading?
First and second reading.
Twenty-four dash two?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Spitali. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to amend out one line on page two. It reads, "Remove Resident Parking," and next to that, "Eighteen Hundred Block of Davis Street." I propose to amend that out, please.
Second.
There's a motion of second to amend twenty-four dash two, the line on the second page regarding remove residential parking, eighteen hundred block of Davis. And a motion of second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call on the amendment.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Amendment passes nine zero. Any further discussion on twenty-four dash two?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, this, this involves six stop signs and two residential parking.
Changes.
Changes. So this is the Board of Public Works. We, we voted to let them deal with all this. We're just finalizing this at this time. It's only first reading.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Councilman Emerson, do you intend on having a committee meeting?
I don't think so.
Okay.
First and second reading will be brought up at the next council meeting, correct?
Yes.
February 12th?
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Passes nine zero, twenty-four dash two, first and second.
Item B, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero-three, sponsored by Councilmen Spitali and Warpo, and ordinance of the common counsel of the City of Hammond, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance the cost of a new fire station in the City of Hammond, Indiana, appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of such bonds and other matters related thereto.
Mr. President?
Councilman Warpo.
I move for passage on first and second reading, with a committee hearing, council as a whole at 5:15 p.m. and a, on, on February 12th. And a public hearing be scheduled for the meeting of February 12th as well.
Second.
And a motion of second by Councilman Spitali, for public hearing on, on February 12th, and council as a whole, committee meeting at 5:15. Any discussion?
Mr. President?
Councilman Warpo.
This is, as the mayor said, just another option when it comes to financing the new fire station, as well. We all know that County Councilman Dave Hamm and County Councilwoman Christine Sidg gave us county ARP funds in the amount of 2.1 million, and we've also appropriated from the city ARP fund. And as the mayor stated, this is just another option to further come up with the best financing.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes.
Racles.
Yes. Twenty-four dash three passes nine zero on first and second.
President Racles, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clark Golick. Next up, resolutions.
Real quick, councilman, could I intervene real quick? I spoke to the attorney for the sanitary district. I have answers for a couple of your questions now. This is only through text messaging, so we, they did approve the program we talked about. It's a reimbursement program. The homeowner installs the improvements, presents a paid invoice, and the Hammond Sanitary District writes up a check for the homeowner up to about $2,000 to reimburse. So. So that's about half to, I don't know, it could be 40% right in that ballpark for the total cost of reimbursement. Owana Miller is involved through community development. We are gonna get you all more details. So, and in spite of all this, we've only had 10 or 15 people participate thus far. So, including myself. My basement's unprotected and I haven't participated yet either, but.
Mr. Mayor, do we know the amount that they have to help the residents?
According to the text message, $2,000 is reimbursed after. So depending on what a good deal.
What's in the pot? How much is in the pot?
Oh, I have no idea with that. Yeah. I mean, this is financed through the district, so. I know unless their federal guidelines apply, in which case I imagine Owana's program's coming up with $2,000, but ultimately it's sanitary districts paying for it. So I just wanted to update you. I'll get you more details by the next council meeting, so.
Thank you. Okay, back to resolutions.
Item A. Resolution 24 R dash 02 sponsored by Councilman Emerson. A resolution ratifying the City of Hammond and/or the Hammond Redevelopment Commission making a good faith offer to purchase and ratify the Hammond Redevelopment Commission filing a condemnation lawsuit pursuant to state law.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
I would ask that we support the City of Hammond and the Redevelopment Commission making a good faith offer to purchase and ratify the Hammond Redevelopment Commission filing a commendation lawsuit pursuant to state law.
So you have a motion to adopt? Is that a motion to adopt that resolution?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Alexander.
I know I didn't say much in our caucus because I was finishing up with my students, but I'm really hoping that with this, we can hopefully work with this family. I understand that we want to take the property and do some development, but for me, I'm just not in hurting a family and not them having a plan or enough time to make a plan to go forward with their lives. Not saying that it's not a good move, but I am saying that we need to be able to give them a little time to make the right choices for them. And what I mean by that is putting a plan in place so that they can make sure that they can come out ahead in terms of if they need to find a new location or anything like that, but definitely setting a plan. So if they only have a year, they have the timing to do so and plan with their family because there is bills that they have to pay.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Salinas.
I'd also like to share my thoughts on that. I agree with Councilman Alexander in terms of, if possible, the city being able to establish a timeline, if it makes sense, to allow the operators to take advantage of the opportunity if it's available. But I am in support of also supporting the opportunity that the city has here in front of them. I think it's a huge opportunity that benefits the whole. So I want to just go on record as saying that I do support this.
Thank you, Councilman Salinas. Any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Realistically, being honest, there's no way. The Huluska family will definitely be able to do one more Fourth of July, for sure. There's no way. I want them to know that. We're committed to that. I'd almost say there's a decent chance they'd get one more Halloween as well. That one's more questionable, but the Fourth of July, and I realize we reached out to the family today, I'm not sure if they were actually successfully contacted, but we wanted them to know because we heard they may be holding back on whether or not to purchase goods for the upcoming Fourth of July. If that's the case, of course, we want them to do what they would normally do and conduct business the way they normally would during the Fourth of July this year. Absolutely. And I'm on record at Hammond Council Meeting in front of the public, on record, saying that. Now, as far, and in response to questions. Now, in response to Halloween, I'm not sure how it's gonna work out going through the system we have, you know, and I appreciate, Councilwoman mentioned taking the property, and that's common terminology, I get that, but we're not taking this property. We're buying it. It's not for sale, okay? But we're buying it. We're gonna pay fair market value for this property, okay? I get it, it's not for sale. So we are taking it in our regards, but we're not taking it for nothing. We're gonna pay market value for this property. And then my bet, the bet for the city is, we can pay market value to the Myers family that owns that property, and we could probably multiply it 30 times and make that property worth millions more than it's worth right now. And that's the bet. That's what we're trying to do. It's nothing spiteful towards the Huluska family at all. In fact, the Huluska family's been nothing but gentlemen and good family to me my whole career. I feel horrible about this, but every once in a while, you have to be the mayor and look at opportunities that are sitting right in front of us. It's sitting right in front of us. Every time we drive into the state of Indiana, it's sitting right there. It's our most marketable piece of property in the entire city, right there off 8094, and I'm trying to do the right thing. And it sucks because I know they're affected by it, but we are gonna pay market value, and I hope that the Myers family is generous with the Huluska family that's been running this thing for 20 years. I hope that their lease deals with this situation, but I'm not sure. All I know is, for the City of Hammond, this is the right move. For the City of Hammond, in my opinion.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Alexander.
I understand that you say that they can get through July. It's my hope that they can get through October and they can go forward because I know that they've made plans for October as well.
No, I'm not sure about that.
So that's just my hope. That's my hope. I mean, you guys, we're gonna do whatever they're gonna do, but I'm just putting on record, I'm hoping they can get through their two seasons and so that they can make proper plans because that is one of their marketable times as well. So I understand that July.
And then we can wait until the Fourth of July after that also. You have to put a limit to it at a certain point, Councilwoman, so.
I'm putting a lot of things into perspective.
I'm gonna follow the law, I promise you.
I'm just saying, I'm putting a lot of things into perspective. I'm looking out, yes, I love the City of Hammond, been here all my life. And I'm not saying that that piece of property is not marketable. What I'm saying is, we have a family that's been in that business for 34 years. And to just put something in front of them, like boom, here you are, that's what it is, I'm just asking that I hope that we can look into letting them finish their season in a proper way since they've been making arrangements so that we can be of good faith to them. Yes, they don't own the property, but they pay, and since we have not been able to get a hold of this company or the people that own it all the way, I think.
We've made contact with the owners of the property.
In the meeting, I heard that we have not heard from the people in the trust.
Litigation with them.
I'm just going off of what I heard in the meeting today during the caucus. So I'm just saying what I'm saying. So I'm just hoping that we can work with this family and finish off their season strong so that we can go ahead and go forward wherever we're gonna go.
Okay, thank you, Councilwoman.
Any other discussion?
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilwoman Vines.
Not that I am an attorney, but I have seen a lot of legal actions take place. They don't move quickly. They just don't move quickly. So I think it's reasonable for the Huluska family to plan, and based on your statements too, Mayor, plan for the Fourth of July. And being that the Meyer family is difficult to get in touch with because they're scattered all over, who knows? Who knows how long this could take? We are not in the business of putting Hammond businesses out of business. That is not our intent here at all. But we are in the business of beautifying Hammond. And that is a prime piece of property. And when I campaigned years ago for the 4th District, you know where I had my fundraiser? At White Castle. Because we didn't have a sit-down restaurant in the 4th District. And it's been long overdue that we have this type of development in the 4th District. My heart goes out to the Huluska family. I understand that you've operated the business for a very long time, but we are in the business of progressing Hammond forward. And that is my opinion on it.
Councilwoman, in response to your statement about we don't normally put businesses out of business, I agree, but sometimes we do. Like, we put River Park Apartments out of business, and then we took River Park Apartments' footprint and we turned it into businesses worth 20 times more than River Park Apartment was, you know? So if we are gonna make a move like this, we gotta be positive that we're gonna be successful. And there's no way we can't be successful at this location. It's visible to hundreds of thousands of cars every day. It's the most marketable piece of property in the City of Hammond. All due respect to that family. And of course, everybody feels terrible, Councilwoman, and, you know, I appreciate your empathy. We're all empathetic. I think it's totally reasonable to say that they're safe with the Fourth of July. I'm not comfortable on the record at this moment saying that I'm, you know, that we're good with Halloween, because I don't know if we are or not, okay? But I know for a fact, there's no way we'll move that fast. And even if we could move faster, we wouldn't move that fast on the Fourth of July. And I want them to know that we have no intention of interfering with our Fourth of July in 2023, excuse me, 2024. I apologize.
Mr. President. Yes, Councilman Tyler.
Mayor, just a question, what's stopping us from making that guarantee? Because as from our understanding, if we take control of this property, or we purchase the property, then the HRC owns it, and they can be landlords from a commercial property.
We could also start moving forward and get ready to develop it commercially.
We could, right. And that's what I'm saying, but what's stopping us from saying right now that we want to guarantee this family one more Halloween?
I'm not comfortable saying that. That's what's stopping me from doing it. I'm not gonna say something stupid and get sued for it and have Hammond be liable for it.
But what I'm saying is, it sounds like we have the power to control when the development starts.
I'm not comfortable saying it, Councilman. I'm not.
Okay.
That's what's stopping me. I'm not comfortable saying that. If I say the wrong thing right now, we'll get sued, and I'm not gonna say that.
But just to answer that question, we do.
I'm answering your question. I'm not comfortable saying that, and I won't say it because I'm not comfortable.
Right, but my question is, we control when the development starts, right?
That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kalwinski.
I think that property is hot. I think it's developable. I think it's gonna be big things at some point. And I wanna support other councilmen in their district when they wanna make a difference in a positive way. But we have a family and their business caught in the middle between the city and the owners, and they're the ones that the hurt is gonna be on if it's done quickly. And I thought I heard from the family, or I read, that they were looking for, trying to stay open three more years at that site. We're maybe offering them a year. I think we should negotiate with them about when they can be out in a way that makes sense. That's a compromise for them and a compromise for the city, maybe two years. But I don't feel comfortable putting people out of their business. People that have been good to Hammond for decades, paid their way through Hammond, provided services, did everything right. And I get, I get this is hot, this is a hot property. I also get the pain that can happen when you no longer have your livelihood. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
No.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
No.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. 24 R 2 passes 7 to 2.
Thank you. I appreciate the council's guidance on this issue.
President Rakels, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Next up, new and unfinished business.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move to reappoint Amy Radelak to the Hammond Community Corporation effective February 12th of 2024 for a period of three years.
Second.
And a motion is second by Councilwoman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes. Passes 9-0. Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Warple.
Just like to take a moment to thank everybody for their thoughts and prayers and reaching out to us over this very hard time, and I appreciate it all. Thank you, it all helped.
Thank you, Councilman Warple.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I would like to echo those sentiments as well, and I'll stop there so I don't cry.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Yes.
Sorry, I just wanted to share that a few months ago, I was able to submit an application on behalf of the city in a few different departments to the Urban Institute's Mobility Action Learning Network. It's an opportunity for up to 30 teams of local leaders across the U.S. to receive technical assistance from the Urban Institute out of DC for advancing locally-driven programs, policies, and actions that boost upward mobility from poverty and racial equity. So over the next year, myself and, like I said, various other representatives from the city will be participating. It's kind of like a fellowship, but we'll be able to learn from 29 other teams from across the country in terms of the services that they provide residents in terms of upward mobility. And that includes education, it includes job training, and other types of assistance. So really excited about participating in that. I want to thank, I know the mayor left, but I want to thank the mayor and his administration for agreeing to participate in that. We'll actually be heading to DC tomorrow for our first in-person convening, and then for the rest of this year, we'll have virtual meetings with our trainers from Urban Institute. We also have the opportunity throughout this program to create a, to create a system of organizations that will be working together to either establish new programs or expand on programs that already exist. Hammond Development Corporation is a part of this, our Community Development Office, our school city is a part of it. So really excited about this program and looking forward to helping it progress Hammond forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmen. Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is closed. Public expression. First up, George Stoyer.
George Stoyer, Robertsdale. As you know, I've written a letter to the council because my concern is, back, I guess it was what, May of '22, you guys passed a resolution to fund litigation concerning a lawsuit filed by the mayor and Eduardo Fontanaz concerning the voting rights. by the mayor and Eduardo Fontanaz concerning the Voting Rights Act, Section Two, the thrust of which was that because there were insufficient minority candidates, voters were being deprived, minority voters were being deprived of proper participation in the political process. It was a stretch. And I had written in history on that, my, my history on it. I had written an earlier, I guess, letter to you guys. And because of its, I don't know, criticism of, and I objected to it at the meeting also, that we embark on this. I didn't submit it because being a good Democrat, the mayor was running against Todd Young at the time, I didn't want to embarrass him in any way, shape, or form, that the possibility of it. So I didn't bring it forth. And then, you know, one thing leads to another, you know, you, I think I may have submitted it to one or two councilmen, a couple of people in the press with the proviso that, hey, just sit on it for a while, nothing may come of it. And then by that time, the case advanced. But this case has been pending, when we get to this May, it'll be three years. And a lot of money. It kind of started out as, I think, something of a lark on a local level, but then it quickly expanded after the original complaint was filed, I think, yeah, obviously, 2021. And then they, in that, then they amended it, and then they amended it again. And this time, they went to big time. They went down, got some Indianapolis lawyers. And these guys, that's just a cash register. And we're paying some serious dollars. And then, January 4th, Judge Simon in the federal court took everything into account, and basically, the, the case seemed to track a case called Quinn versus Illinois. I mean, the whole approach of the city of Hammond seemed to parallel how, how they approached the whole idea. And the judge, he said he was bound, he couldn't do anything. He was dead in the water, that the Quinn still controlled, and they, and they, and they threw the case out, the federal claim out. But then there's also state claims. And as my contention, my objection to the continued participation in this suit, that we, the city of Hammond does not, no longer has, even if it did, I don't believe it ever had, I thought, had standing to sue. And what that means is, we're going to go through and pay out all these lawyers and all of a sudden, only to have at the end, at the end of the road, when everything is just getting ready to be summarized and everything, only after all the money's gone, oh, well, gee, we didn't have standing anyway. Anyway, it's, I'm giving a poor summary of it, but I hope you read the letter. I believe I have the credibility that you guys would read it. And, and I, and I'm doing it so you guys have better information. I don't think you were adequately informed, because if you look at those minutes from May 23rd, '22, the mayor was very ambiguous, very vague, and this, I felt, gives you, you can revisit this thing because he wants to appeal it. He calls it a crusade. He should do it on his dime then.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
TJ.
How's it going? My name is TJ. I live in the fourth district. And I think Councilman Tyler made a great point. Hammond is in control of the timeline for this haunted house eminent domain. And he asked, why can't we guarantee a more forgiving timeline? And the mayor said that he wasn't ready to answer that. And so I'm wondering, why would you pass a resolution with unanswered questions on the table? Like I said, I live in the fourth district and I can drive five minutes in any direction to a restaurant, and there's no hurry to get another restaurant added by next year. And these people said in the last meeting that they found out they were getting their business demolished in the newspaper. And I hardly think that's enough time, and you guys had an option to maybe delay this, maybe, or maybe throw your weight around and get them a full calendar year to prepare for losing their entire business. And, and I, I'm wondering why you didn't. So please show more sympathy on this family. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Next up, Ken Rosick.
Greetings, counsel. I'm talking about the Briar East Woods, of course, and the bridge project that the city has. The destruction of the Briar East Woods will have detrimental effects to the wellness of the community and lower our quality of life in Hessville. The city bridge will increase noise, pollution, the risk of flooding. Those are facts. It destroys valuable natural habitat with hundreds of old trees. It does not solve our public safety issues with schoolchildren. It will make it harder to walk around, less pedestrian, and more car-dependent. So much for your walkable city. This makes no sense, especially when we have an alternative that would service the entire neighborhood better, including the three public schools on Grand Avenue, without all the collateral damage and for less money. What more can you ask for? When you add the $5 million for the pedestrian bridge, that puts the city bridge at $8 million more than the bridge on Grand Avenue. Why are we spending more for less services? What will the city be destroying? What will you all be destroying in Hessville? You all will be destroying. Here are two experts. Cascoon, PhD, Indiana University, author of the book Calumet's Beginnings, Great Shorelines and Settlements of Southern Lake Michigan, PhD. Professor Scoon was invited by the Hammond Historical Preservation Society to examine our dune woodlands. In this portion of his statement, he makes it point, letting us know that Gibson Woods are dune and swale, that they were formed by water as Lake Michigan receded. The Briar East Woods are genuine dunes, formed by wind thousands of years before. He states, this is important because this landscape is older than dune and swale landscapes. It was originally formed during the time period when the Lake Michigan shoreline was what is now 169th Street, beginning about 4,700 years ago. He goes on, before retiring from Indiana University, I had taken my students to Gibson Woods every year for half, for perhaps 20 years. I would, I had them, had I known about the parcel of land now in question, the Briar East Woods, I would have taken the students to that first location and then gone to the Gibson Woods so the students can see the, see both locations, thus see the difference in the sand features. These are ancient dune woodlands, 2,000 or 3,000 years older than anything in dune and swale. Emily Stork, Indiana Department of Natural Resources, grand calumet ecologist. The black oaks on this dune were particularly interesting to me because they were larger than any black oaks I have ever seen on any 900 acres of protected dune remnants, dune swale in Indiana. I have never seen black oaks that looked older than these. My guess is that they were at least 150 years old, hundreds of them. The destruction of the Briar East Woods will lower the quality of life in Hessville.
Thank you, Ken. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?